Games.
Here.
Selectmen's rep, Charles Harbeck, it's not here. Steve Malone, alternate.
Here.
Is here. Michael Scungeo, alternate. Jane Johnson, alternate. And I will seat Steve for Brandon. And the agenda this evening. Is the approval of the minutes of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. And under public hearings, we have planning board twenty-four dash zero twenty-two. That's a boundary line adjustment. They submitted by Edward Goodrich on behalf of Thomas Schneier for a property located at six eight five Old Homestead Highway. Property is located at. Tax map two thirty-four, lot fifty-seven, and is in a residential district. Under discussions and other business, we have definition discussion of office, definition discussion of retail establishment, and site plan review training. Bring us back to the top. And we need a regional impact motion, and nothing here. Okay, motion by Michael that we do not have anything on our agenda that would be a regional impact. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Alright, let's move on to the minutes, the minutes of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Motion by Victoria, is there a second?
So.
See, so I think Mark gave a second by Mark. So any further discussion? Hey, I just have one thing. And that would be on page two. And it would be the second, let's see, it looks like one, two, three, it's a second motion paragraph, starts with motion. Says motion to approve one-year extension for a turmoil's approved site plan, which was approved on October twelfth. Seconded by Brandon Self. It doesn't say who. Made the motion. Okay, you did it, okay, so would you just note? Stefan, that that Michael made that motion?
That's awesome.
Yeah, that motion on page two.
Second by.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Then all those in favor, let me take the saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, got that underway. Now let's move on to the boundary line adjustment. We have the map in front of us and the application in our packet. And if the application looks good, then. We can have a motion that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing. Let me have a look here. We have it in here. The name and address of the applicant. Mailing address, uh, let's see, and it's street address is there. Map and lot numbers are there. Or just in this residential area. Name, mailing address, his phone number, it's there, it's there. And it's signed. And we have the. Flat in front of us, so. Looks to me like the application is complete. So. Okay, motion by Mark that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, move on to the public hearing, I'll open up the public hearing. And again, we have the map in front of us showing what's going on here. Mark made the motion on the last, yeah, sorry, Mark made the second, and Richard seconded, that the application was completed. Okay. So. And pretty much what they're doing is you can see they're. They're extending the lot size a little bit, adding so much to that lot, and they're adding that like diagonal. Line in here, everybody see what's going on?
Yeah, it's colored on that.
Oh, okay, you've got it there, alright. And. Now. And would you identify yourself as a record and just give us a brief, identify yourself for the record, just a brief synopsis of what you're doing?
I'm Ed Goodrich, but when surveying the project, Tom Schneider, the trustee of the of the trust.
Okay.
Um. I'm sorry if I'm taking. I'm hearing impaired, both my hearing aids died and then. Next. Two weeks, I'm getting my new ones.
That's it, just tell us the speaker.
Please bear with me, and I'm a little handicapped tonight. What you see before you is something we're trying to make a legitimate building out of the shed in the back. For years. The Schneider family owned two tracts of land. The small house lot of point six eight acres. And the larger land in the rear. When they, a barn was built, it straddled the lines and. Now the family would like to make sure that the house and the barn are all on the same lot. And the back land can be free and clear. Uh, pasture land and and mowing land. Uh, so what we're we're doing is taking that small. Area, when the uh, using the existing frontage pin. And a an existing pin on the boundary. We've set a new pin. Connecting the lines to incorporate all of the barn on the lot with the house, enlarging that. No other changes, no additional lots. We're coming into the proposal with two lots, we're going out, hopefully with two lots. Now.
Okay.
Happy to try to answer questions if you have any, I, it's a pretty simple proposal, I think.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Are there any questions from the board?
Just, um. I'll be hard to hear, I know, um. This shit, will this meet proper setbacks?
Yeah, I, yes, we put it, we put the line along.
What is it, twenty feet?
It's twenty feet in the back, yeah.
Which is, which is why we, we made plenty of room to get around the backside of the barn, which. Uh, always certainly been nicer to make it parallel, but.
Yeah.
And it brings that lot almost up to an acre.
Yeah.
So it's pretty darn close there, almost up to an acre.
Almost.
Anybody, any other board member? Richard, do you have anything on that? No, no, okay, don't go. Anybody from the public here on this one? Nope, so if no more questions from the board or the public, I will close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you. So again, it's pretty straightforward, see what they're doing here. And. Just need a motion, I guess, unless there's any other discussion. Motion by Michael York to approve the lot line adjustment. Seconded by Mark, is there any further discussion?
I love how much information is, this is a.
It's a good one, yeah.
It's a good one, yeah.
Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed?
I'm complimenting you on your, on your plan, you know, there's so much good information, but. Yeah, it's really nice.
You're good to go.
And it's approved. Bring us to. Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got the, I forgot that it wasn't. I know. So. You pulled her up. We're taking you next. So this is a rezoning on Base Hill Road, correct?
Yeah.
Just come on up and know what you have in mind.
You know, I don't give the.
We have, we have this.
Just that.
Yep.
Alright, so we have a written proposal.
Mm-hmm.
And I basically am documenting what it is zone now. For every lot on Base Hill Road. And then what everybody was for activating. From the future on, so I don't know if you want to have that handed out.
I mean, if you have at least one of them, we'd like for the record.
So you talked to each of the property owners, is that?
Yeah. At least, I don't know, have it done, no, no. Have it on this form or through somebody as well.
Okay, so is that your form to submit for a warrant article, is that what that is?
Both of them together.
Okay.
Correct, that's the written form, and this is the, okay, that everybody's seen this proposal, that I've spoken to you on the road, that are okay with it happening. To rezone again from commercial industrial or business to residence from residential.
Okay, so you're not.
Thing that's there now is granted. Like around the paving, hill construction, obviously the gas station up on the corner, and the sign works guy, and the two, and obviously all the restored just smaller units are there. That's what we're thinking.
You're not coming in under a petition right now, you're just presenting to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you can, you know, if the board disagrees with you, then you can petition.
Correct.
With twenty-five signatures, I think, to get on the warrant anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I'm not just the only one that's asking for this.
Mm-hmm.
And I've spoken to everybody in the room. And they were. Kind of mind-boggled about how it is zone currently. Um, most of those properties that are in the commercial sector zone are residential. And they just didn't understand the complexity of why that happened, so I didn't, I can't even remember when it was done. And then that kind of person, the Goslins, which are in the business zone, they don't even remember when it was done, and they've been there for twenty years. So, um, we just would be a lot more happier if it was a zone more residential than commercial and business.
So let's see, you're, you're submitting this to rezone all the ways from Route ten, all the way up to the Keen line, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, all the properties there.
Yeah.
Could be rezoned to.
Residential.
Residential or rural ag?
Correct.
Residential or rural ag?
Residential.
Oh, either one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sherry, didn't you ask, they exempt the, like, the first two properties from Route ten, so you brought the two DOT properties and then the.
Correct.
Goslin and Global.
Yeah.
Both of those two properties in on corners would remain as they are.
DOT doesn't care anyway, because they're gonna put their office where they want it.
Exactly, yeah.
Stay.
Yeah.
So you're saying residence or rural ag, are you, are you saying you're leaving it up to the planning board, or you don't?
It is, it is documented on the written form that I presented to you, so, um, there are two that we.
Let me read that to the board then, because nobody saw it really.
Okay. This is one of the rough draft ones that I have, that I don't.
Okay, but this is the one you're submitting right here, right, you gave us there, okay. This is rezoning proposal for Base Hill Road, Swansea, New Hampshire. Says whereas Base Hill Road is largely res- largely residential lots with single-family homes, and whereas the Keen. End of Base Hill Road is zoned as rural, low-density, single-family residence or conservation, and. Whereas Base Hill Road is a class-five road not wide enough to handle a commercial slash business volume of traffic. And is already overburdened by trucks and businesses, or businesses, vehicles using it for a shortcut. Making it unsafe for residents to walk and bike, and whereas. Lots on Base Hill Road are backed in Swansea by Yale Forest on one side and a large significant wetland on the other. Which serves as an important flood plain and wildlife habitat, and creates a critical wildlife crossing situation, and. Whereas the entire east side. And half the west side of Base Hill Road lies atop an aquifer. Therefore, the rezoning map of the town of Swan, the zoning map of the town of Swansea dated nine one forty-seven, as amended, is to be further amended as follows. Lots fronting on Base Hill Road, now included in the business district or commercial industrial district, shall instead be included in the residence district. Lots with existing businesses to be grandfathered for current use owner. So that's the proposal. And then we have, I think, a list of all the lot numbers and who lives there, and the address.
In the zones that we currently are in.
What they're in now, okay, yeah. Yeah, for a test, some are yet split up between business and the. You got rural ag, some rural ag on there, I guess not, just business.
Yeah, the rural ag, Yale Forest would be having a.
There is, yeah, yeah, Yale Forest, it's a rural ag, yeah. Right.
Yeah, lot eight and lot seven, sorry.
It's a, you know. No, I'm, I'm, this is the keen section. This is also this out there, is this, yeah, this is a, this is rural. Oh, excuse me, no. This is keen, um.
Yeah, there's also a, the amount of Keens end, which is a mile, just so you have, obviously maybe, I consider it, that there are miles of the ground. And it's also low-density living, single-family homes.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Let's see, and we are business all the way to the Keen line.
Where does it start?
Go ahead.
The businesses there, grandfathered in, does that mean they can no longer expand their business that they so decided they're their own property?
It'd be much more difficult, they'd have to go to the ZBA to do that. Yeah.
That's a concern.
It's, it's also a concern, yeah, rezoning those businesses, which now. They purchase those properties as business, commercial property, to use as that, and. Then you throw them a curveball and zone it residence, which makes them all non-conforming.
But the existing businesses that are there.
Yeah.
They stay as business.
They would, yeah.
And they can work within their own lot, I don't see what.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, or expand whatever they want to within their lot.
They would anyway.
Right.
Within their lot.
Right, so I don't see that being an issue.
The only.
I've talked to, um, Andy Hill. He's okay with whatever.
Yeah.
Um, and then I spoke with Matt a while back, and he's indifferent about it, so.
Matt, who was that?
I don't know, it's me.
Okay.
One, one issue that I I see maybe coming up is the vacant lot that All Purpose Storage owns.
Correct.
And so they are proposing that be rezoned.
And that may turn into a legal issue, if the town goes rezoning it while they're in the middle of a court case there, which is.
Yeah, I don't think it can be rezoned while, I don't think it can either. Yeah.
It probably, you're right.
Yeah, it probably can't be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. Comments from the board?
But that was my biggest concern, is are we going to be steering? The business owners' right to expand their business, like the vacant lot for all purpose storage. I don't think it's fair to tell them, he bought that with the purpose of doing something. Knowing what the zoning was at the time, so it's like stealing his property.
It's a taking.
Right.
All zoning is a taking, but yeah, that's, in my opinion, I think you're correct, yeah, I agree with that, it's a taking, it's a taking in the rest of them that are there too, because there are more than. The uses that are there on those properties, there are more allowable uses in that commercial zone and in the business zone. So if you rezone it to residential or even rural ag. You've just taken all those uses away from those properties there, except for ten.
Do you, does the board know when this was voted, when this was approved?
That's how.
Alton Paving is barely a son of a child.
Or I mean, like, the the zone, I'm sorry.
The zone, the zone, no, I don't recall, can't recall it.
My predated myself too, before we had zoning issues.
Okay.
Okay, before Alton Paving, that was a Barasus.
Yeah.
Uh, mansion.
Okay.
Barasus Garage.
Yeah. And then, um, Fox had a. A repair facility there at one time, car repair facility, somebody's house. You know, I don't know when, we'd have to do research, and when zoning actually started in Swansea.
Still ongoing.
Yeah, it's always gonna be, but yeah, that commercial industrial has changed. Like, maybe twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, something like that.
I, I think we have to.
Hmm, could be.
I, I'd like to think about this in terms of the context, so there's, you know, there's sort of the theoretical question of changing the zoning on properties, but that people have either agreed to or not agreed to. That change, but, um. What's the status of Base Hill Road?
Class five.
Estate road, town road?
Town, town, town maintained.
Town.
I think it's different for Keen, oh, it might be different from.
Okay, it's all about Keen too.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's. Um.
It's not a class five in Keen, you know?
No, I mean, ownership wise.
Oh, 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 yeah.
On that Keen side.
It's a class five, right?
The town definitely maintains that Swansea side.
Yeah, it's a class five road.
Okay, so class five, we have a hundred percent responsibility for maintaining it.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, because, I mean, one of the key issues on this section of road, I think, always has been that it's, especially up in Keen, um. You know, it's. Not big road, right?
Yeah, yeah, we know, down lanes, we know.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, it's the road itself. Feels as if it's much more appropriate for the lower level of use, that would be, you know, uses that would generate traffic that would be in a residence district, so. There's that, okay. To, to bring it down to the level in particular, in this instance.
Well, I think I'd be in favor of changing it residential down all the ways to where it is residential now. You know, excluding that field, obviously, because that field is, you know, the.
Still a little.
Yeah, it is, but down to that field, it's all residents now. And I guess it's own business now, which that could be done this year at town meeting, down to that property line.
Right.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to accept this is property to be replicated?
You can't, what do you mean?
Take it down to a certain point then, where the business starts.
Well, that's kind of what we're talking about, yeah, because it's own business, you have one of these up there too, right? It's own business all the way up to the Keen line, yet. As we know, it's, it's residence all the way down to where. Actually, that storage business starts in that area there.
That would be, we would submit. Turning this into residence, taking out business.
Are we talking like lots eighteen, nineteen, here, it's Rob John here.
I don't know, it's seen lots on the other.
People. Uh, there are lots that are actually in the residence, I mean, they're in the commercial industrial zone, that are actually just regular residents.
Yeah.
So I think it needs to be specifically. Certain lots need to be designated as residential. Residential versus commercial, and commercial industrial have been there. Because you basically grandfathered in to do their commercials without problems.
I, I think if there was a change. And we want to maintain the businesses as they are, it's nice that that's a contiguous set of properties.
Right.
Right, because we really can't piecemeal.
It's, that's spot zoning, but, you know, we, we defended that before, which.
Yeah, so, you know, we can't do that, so can you tell me, uh, on the, the numbers here, which ones are actually residents?
Yeah, um, in the business zone, coming back from Keen.
Okay.
Uh, eighteen is a residence.
Eighteen, eighteen, eighteen.
On the east side.
Okay, yep.
Nineteen.
Yep.
Is a residence.
Yep, I, um.
Then of course you have the lot that's our, um, zone business, which is, uh, all purpose storage.
Right, lot twenty.
Then you have lot twenty-two, which is, uh, Arlington Bathing, which is a commercial business. Um, twenty-three is a residence.
That, that's a business, actually.
Twenty-three?
Yeah, that's Rob John.
It just got sold, and now it's just a residential property. It's being used, it's renting it up right now.
He owns two lots there.
He just sold it to Jimmy Tapesta.
Like his business?
As a property. As a rented property.
Both of them?
It is the home, no, just the twenty-three, which is the house.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, twenty-four. Which is just over into the commercial industrial zone, is a small tiny house, maybe nothing but thousands square feet home. And then twenty-six. Uh, L's Electric just purchased that and is just using it to store stock at the moment, there's nobody for, living in the house of the, 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 um, the lot. The next house, which is twenty-seven, is a residential home.
Okay.
Twenty-eight is a residential home.
Yep.
Then you have, from there on, I would consider is commercial industrial, which is the DOT, lot twenty-nine to lot thirty.
Okay.
On the east side, and I don't want to forget about, banana tree main side, he has a property.
Yeah.
Which is lot twenty-five, which has a small access point on Base Hill Road, on the east side. And that's also a lot, this twenty-five is also a zone, commercial industrial.
How about coming down the west side?
So the west side, coming from the, uh, south end, which is at the Route ten. Location down Base Hill Road is low, which is twenty-two, which is the gas station. Twenty-three is Sign Works. And then Getty is a residential home, lot four. And lot five is also just a residential home. Lot six is Janagoki, and she's just a small residential home there. Debbie Spray is lot seven, and that's always been a residential home. Then you have lot eight behind that, which is Yale Forest, and it's also in the resident, uh, commercial industrial zone, a good portion of it. We want to put that to rule agricultural, um, lot eleven is Norris, and he has a small farm, and it's a residential home. Then lot twelve is also a residential tiny home, and that's still in the commercial industrial zone. Then you go to lot thirteen, which does overlay a little bit into the business zone. Um, and that's for Yale Forest, rural agricultural, we're hoping for. Lot fourteen is hill construction. And my home is lot fifteen. And it's a residential home, I run my business out of. And then Rice, which is lot sixteen. That's a duplex, it's a residential home. And then it's Yale Forest from there to the Keen line.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I just can't justify leaving those residential homes that are in the commercial zone. To be commercial, besides maybe the blocks, like, four, maybe four or five. Up at the south end of Base Hill Road, adjacent to Route ten. And all these property owners are for it to be changed to residence.
All the ones you, all the ones that signed?
Yes.
Petition.
Yeah, that I got a hold of today.
Sherry, you had a question that came up about, is there a different tax rate?
Yes.
That one of the residents, or was I asking, there is a different tax rate depending on what zone you're in?
No, it's strictly the value of your property.
Right, in, in general speaking, the commercial property, they're worth more on the market, that's why.
So the other question I have is, on this map, the blue overlay. What does that signify?
That's Yale Forest.
Uh, that, that, that just means it's wetlands.
Yeah.
Lot, lot twenty-one. Lot twenty-one is, uh, All Purpose Storage owns that lot, and they would propose it to be rezoned to wetlands.
Have you gotten the EPA involved in any?
We do, yeah.
The EPA has not been directly involved, uh, the DES have been aware of those two lots are adjacent to my lot. Um, and how close it is, an important. Uh, waterway in that area. Um, and that's all at the moment, um, and the nature conservancy of New Hampshire. Is interested in helping us preserve that area at the moment, and then try to find funding. For those areas. And considering it's a flood plain, that's been there forever. Um, and the, the new red roof that comes through. If that beats up into the Keen end with the swamp ash roof, I believe. Is a high priority freshwater. Uh, brook. That I've been told from the nature conservancy of New Hampshire.
Well, a lot of town in the zoning, in our town, actually, every town probably, is just as you see it here. In the zones, there's a lot of residential. Activity and a lot of residential units in that, it's just the way zoning is, zoned for a specific, like that, commercial industrial zone because of Route ten being there. That's why it's like that, and it's not to say that anything will ever go in there, who knows, depends.
Right.
A lot of lots there, a lot of people that have to sell their lots to some larger, you know, industry, if it was gonna go in there ever. But as the zoning goes, it doesn't make sense to, you know, ride around all these little areas here for zoning, just one line, and that's why it's drawn like that, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be developed that way. As far as the, the residential part of it goes. Um. You still could change lots, was it eighteen, nineteen, eighteen and nineteen to residential, because they are now. And sixteen and fifteen, because they are now. Because that, then that starts at what, hills construction, and that, ones that are, are. Business and zone for business, I think should remain business and zone for business, because. Well, they're expecting it, one thing, and, and they're.
Yeah, those lots, they, they said, will be grandfathered in.
Yeah, but it's different grandfathered in than having it actually zoned for business. Grandfathered in, you know, you can use that business as long as you're using it, if you're not using it for one year, then you lose it, and it goes back to. Nothing, or re- residential probably is what it would be. And you can't change a business in there without a bunch of red tape going to the ZB or something like that, if you wanted it, we'll say, this guy wanted to sell his business to somebody else, then. It's not gonna go all, ZB would get involved, and you have to go through there if you want to change a business in there.
How did we approach? The, I can't remember the name of the road. Off of Flav roof, behind Fenton. Two years ago, we tried, we, we put out. A thing.
Hill Road?
No, it's not one.
No, I'm all barging massive. And they assess me.
I think, I think that's what it was, but we.
Yeah.
We gave, we had a, a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And invited the res- the residents there to voice an opinion, because Fenton wanted to, um, change. The zoning back there.
No, you wanted to keep it.
Oh, keep it, excuse me.
Right, because you have that commercial problem.
Yeah, and we had, there, most of them. There's like a dozen. Or half dozen residents, residential units there, plus, was it, uh, some pool company at the very end of it?
What's an engineering company, I don't know if they're changing.
Or something, but anyways, you know. Didn't we present that?
We proposed that it be, you know, that those properties, I think, be put into business district.
Yeah.
I think that's what the proposal was, because it made sense that they should go in there, and the property owners were in favor of too, so that went on as a warrant.
So, okay, that went into the warrant, I agree, so.
So this would be the same thing, go into a warrant article, regardless of what the planning board says, they can petition to go in anyways.
Mm-hmm. So. Just want to be sure that. You know, we're following same sequence.
Yeah, and that's how it would be.
Yeah.
So.
I support the changes because it is mostly residential homes and just.
It is up up to that point, but it isn't afterwards, you know, up to that point of those two lots there, I think where your lot is. And uh and then lot twenty, yeah, it's residential and yeah, it makes sense to. Turn it to residential because it has not been turned to anything else but residential, the other properties have, they're already businesses down there. It's not fair to them, I don't think. In the commercial, well, commercial zone on the right hand side and in business zone on both sides of the road there, before you get to the commercial zone. But business side, you got the storage units and you've got the uh hills instruction, correct? And you've got the paving company in there somewhere.
Business zone right there, block between commercial industrial.
It would be if it were rezoned that way, yeah. If it would be a block, well, within the residential zone, it would be a block of grandfathered father businesses in there.
Right.
Yeah.
And so you're saying that that can happen?
It can happen if the town votes it to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other people up above that line that are solely in the commercial industrial zone, they're all just homeowners? And that can't be changed with this residence?
Any of it can be, if the town votes it to change, it doesn't matter what the planning board says, if the town votes a change, it's gonna be changed. Because that's who has the authority.
But you, and let me just, I'm trying to understand what you said about if it's a, if there's a business that's there.
Yeah.
And they can do what they need to do. You said that they have problems.
I said they can continue with the same business that they have, if it's rezoned, you know, if if it's rezoned to resident residential, they can continue with that business. As long as they're operating the business, if they shut down for one year, then it goes back to residential.
Yeah, so I would have been proposing any, in any business that's there now. Stay and do what they're doing, I wasn't personally thinking that they change at all.
No, no, they wouldn't, they'd just be restricted. They'd be restricted to any expansion or change in their business there, they, because of the zone, if it were changed to residential. For the, and the uses would be restricted as well.
Right, so yeah, I'm I'm one expecting them to be changed to residential from what business zone they're on commercial, though, that they're doing now.
Yeah, you mean the use, because you you are suggesting it change to a different zone. You're suggesting it be residential zone, which has specific uses, which don't include what they're doing on that property. But they can, because you're saying they'll be grandfathered in, which they would be grandfathered in.
Okay.
But if they wanted to change that business or expand it or or do any changes on there. They'd have to go to the zoning board of adjustment first to get a variance to it.
Change whatever business they're running there.
Or ch- or expand the business or change anything on it, put up another building or tear building down or do any modifications that has anything to do with the planning board. They would be to the ZBA first for a variance and then come here.
And that's just a, isn't that just a normal stage?
It is not, it is not, if if it's an allowable use, you want to expand your business, you just come to the planning board.
Correct.
You don't have to get a variance, which is difficult again.
Right, okay.
So that's again my reasoning on, I'm not being for your proposal.
I agree, yeah, okay, but yeah, because I mean, the residents are definitely not. Content to be in a commercial industrial zone, but they're just residents.
Yeah.
So that's.
Go ahead.
Would we have to hold a public meeting, a public meeting on their, yeah, on their proposal? You'd have to give us a formal dissertation uh as to what you want to do.
Yeah, we'd still hold a public hearing, you know, if you got the the twenty-five signatures to go on the warrant article. Still come here, planning board holds a public hearing, anybody, the public can comment on it, you know, neighbors and all that type of stuff there. And then um the planning board can't really change it at all on you, they might be able to change a word here or there, something that did not change the intent of it. And then it would go directly onto the warrant, how you have, just has to go through the planning board first.
And and at that point, the planning board, at that public hearing, the planning board would be voting in support or in opposition.
That is true, yeah, that's right, yes.
Could still conceivably have that little tagline on the warrant article that says the planning board endorses or supports this.
Yeah, or is against it.
Or is against it.
Either way.
Yeah. But but can I say something about, um, I'm just thinking about how we get to have zoning in Swansea, you know, how zoning happened. So originally, um, I think the way zoning was set up was sort of an arbitrary. You know, band of color on either side of, say, you know, Route ten was designated, right? Um and I suspect that's what happened here. And now we're we're looking to fine tune it in a way that reminds me of what we did in the. Um around the mill, you know, in the village, busy village bus.
Yeah.
Business two, where we actually looked at, um, you know, how. What what the current parcel sizes are, how they're being used, how they're likely to be used. And really sort of fine tuned. That instead of just having this, you know, linear slot, we we kind of said, okay, this is really how it's likely gonna happen, which is, you know, a planning function, just cool. And I I'm just, I'm looking at the locations, I've circled all the the lots that are residents here and. It, I think this line where we shift from business district from orange to yellow, business to commercial industrial district. It looks fairly arbitrary, you know, currently, based on the uses. And in fact, I think it might make a great deal of sense to refine where that boundary is. Um even if we weren't to change to residence, but I think, I think it's appropriate to consider extending. If we do change parts of the business district to residence, I think it's really appropriate to consider extending that. Further down into the commercial industrial district.
Extending the business part of it or or essential? Is business part, you mean?
No, I mean, if I'm I'm presuming that we would consider converting some of the business district into residence district, as is being proposed. But I think that this, the line between the two districts, the current line, looks kind of arbitrary.
Can I tell you how that happened?
How?
Um they, in the middle of Route ten, right? Route ten, they did fifteen hundred foot either way, all corridors, so that's just kind of how it happened.
Yeah, so it's it's not like it's based on, you know, the road or the topography or anything like that. It's just, you know, here's here's a rough sketch, yeah.
All the way down, yeah.
So I think this, I think, you know, when citizens come and ask us to fine tune, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to listen up, especially if it's. You know, the entire neighborhood is signing.
Like we're on a highway and uh we're off the highway, which so many feet. From the main road where we think most of the commercial industrial businesses would be. You know, and it's not gonna be improved on, I don't think, this road, being a tight road. You know.
Yeah, it would take a while. Anyway, I, you know, that's just a lot of words, but um I I hope that you will. Bring, you know, I'd like for us to have a public hearing and I hope that all those neighbors could come to, you know, speak something piece.
Well, let's give them some direction. Because if the planning board isn't gonna go for it, they should go ahead with their petition and start getting their signatures. So I'm not in favor of it, we can have a consensus or a motion, we don't really need a motion, the consensus is fine because we aren't really deciding anything on it. But we're giving consensus, so the residents know which direction to go, they aren't waiting for us forever. So I'm just gonna go around their own, I'm not again, I'm not in favor of.
When when you say it, can you tell me what you're not?
I'm not in favor of of uh turning any of those business or commercial properties back into residential.
Making any cha- any, you know.
I'm in favor of of being residential down to where it starts to be.
So you're saying fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen?
It would be those, yeah, it would be eighteen, nineteen, correct, yeah, and sixteen and fifteen, correct, yeah.
Only those.
So with the thought, when you drop down below fourteen, uh which is a business. Then you get a whole series of residentials until you get to twenty-three, so four.
Yeah, you do.
So that. I I agree with what you said, but with four, right? It kind of raises the question. No, wh- what was the business in fourteen?
The business in fourteen is a sales excavating business way back in the day. So now it's mostly just a salvage yard of just multiple old equipment sitting there. And clearly is now renting out the garage portion of it to an excavator. Currently that's using it now, which is minimal.
Right. If that was residential and that was the existing business, if he was to re-rent that, he would have to come.
For a different use, yeah, he would, yeah.
Even if it was the same use, but a different business in there?
It's not, well, you don't have the multi-tenant thing anymore.
Right.
So.
I'm just saying, he's renting a site to an.
It it really depend who he is renting it to, he'd have to come for land use board at least for them to decide that.
Then we come down, we clearly have lot twenty, which is in conflict, lot twenty-two. Um those are businesses and then we have all residents until you get to DOT. With the exception maybe of twenty-six, what was lot twenty-six?
Twenty-six is um.
It's a resident that was.
Is a resident, that was used for residence for quite some time and now has a electric inside. Nobody started living in the house on the top, it's a little for storage, it is a private.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, I don't have to lean towards the not residential at this point there, though.
But but what you're saying, I think when you enumerate them, you're saying that those four businesses are the outliers, you know. Compared to all the different residences that are there.
All right, just wanted to get more information before Scott got around to me.
Well, we don't have, if you wanna think about it, we don't have to decide at this meeting, I just want to give them somewhere to go.
Exactly, so that's why I want to kind of play it out now as much as I can. So we've we've seen this overlay of wetlands and I know I've walked the the property, lot twenty. Um where the proposed business uh was was going in there. And that lot borders the wetlands.
Yes, yeah, trying to talk.
Yeah.
And it does, it's a floodplain period, like that's a pretty wet.
I'm sure you actually know this question, but I look at the maps we recently got, it would that be considered a significant wetland? Based on.
I haven't seen the evaluation, but I would say yes, it's a large one.
See, I was thinking that too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, look, conservation committee has public hearings, um one of the the things that are coming up is we have wetland buffer, right? So I know that lot twenty is right on the wetlands and it is important to have a buffer for wetlands, especially a significant wetlands. So. I'm just throwing that out there, just so everybody at least has the information that I have. Because I can see. Well, I know, never mind, we can't change it because of the lawsuit, we can't change that portion of lot twenty because of the lawsuit, okay?
And residential uses in this commercial industrial doesn't mean that they're gonna be commercial industrial. You know, they can remain residences as long as they need to, like portions of that is owned in Yale Forest. That's never gonna be developed, that I know of anyways, for any industrial commercial, it's still zoned that way, but it's never gonna be industrial.
I'm I'm sure they'll send a rap if they have a problem with it.
Well, we we found a couple of times to try to buy the Yale Forest and it's just, I said, no, it's a write-off.
But we've had them in, to the planning board, they've come up to the planning board maybe a few times, discussing it, what they're doing with that.
Put it in conservancy, yeah.
And well, but even though, you know, I'm just saying that the zoning map is drawn that way, but it doesn't necessarily mean that those properties are gonna be that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, I'm done asking questions.
Richard, so you're.
Look, I'd like to see this business district. I'd like to see the lot. Uh plotted in there, we've got them on. I can't see them at all, I'm sorry.
Slightly dry, I think you can barely see a couple of lots, there's one there.
Part of the.
Yeah, just pass that up.
You keeping track of all your stuff?
Yeah. Just in the. And then there's a regular one, so you can see the other other side of that, and I can see lines either, so.
I'd like to see it blocked out. Uh more specifically as to what you want in in. Isolating the existing businesses that are there on both sides.
Yeah.
Just so I can get a better handle on it, but uh. I really don't, you know, we've we've changed or given the opportunity to change commercial industrial into residential. We do it flatly. If the population wants to to do it or propose it, I don't see why we, why we should be giving them any difficulty.
Okay, Michael?
Um with your strike, I'm concerned about the businesses that are there in the property.
Okay, so that's a no. Steve?
It may come close to spot zoning.
It is spot zoning, yeah.
We. Take the residential properties that is residential use properties. And rezoning residential leaves the business properties as they currently are.
You can, you know. Yeah, well, no, you want to turn all the business and everything into residential, do this, no, no, you're, we're talking about two different things. You're saying it can still use their business, but it's zoned residential, correct?
No, the businesses that are there.
Are this gonna be zoned business?
They can stay business, they can stay commercial industrial, what Arlington can stay what it's doing, all of our source can stay what they're doing. Hills can stay what it's doing, which is business. And then um the lots up near the highway, which is obviously the sign works. And the DOT, obviously, and the gas station stays commercial industrial.
So that'd still be zoned, huh?
Exactly, commercial industrial, then all these little residents, which is basically, um. You know, three quarters of the people there, they're in just residential homes. Four, five, six, seven, you know, eleven, twelve, be zone residential.
Hey, I have a question, I I'm sorry, we already talked about this on uh on Tuesday when we met.
Right.
If we're only going to be rezoning the the lots that currently have uh residences on them. Are, is this rezoning only if they sell their lots? Then you guys don't want any more businesses going on to those lots? Because otherwise, what's the point of rezoning?
Right, you got a lot more businesses.
If they sell their re- if they sell their house, then somebody could come in and build something and that that that's what we, that's what you guys don't want, correct?
Correct, we don't want any more volume of like all of the storage or another Arlington beating moving in. Or another shopping mall showing up, same commercial zone, which doesn't even make sense here at all.
Okay.
So that's the point.
So so that, what you're saying now kind of would be um rezoning even the businesses, but allowing the businesses. See, there's a difference between doing that or leaving it zoned business.
Yeah.
If you leave it zoned business.
Right.
Probably won't, you know, get resistance, um probably on the board, okay?
Right.
Um because you're not taking somebody's rights away.
Right.
But if you have residents that want to be, you know, residential.
Yeah.
Then I I would think the board would be okay with that.
Right.
So the properties in question are really fourteen, twenty-two and twenty and twenty. Those three properties um are the really the ones in question.
Right, they stay with the way they are right now.
Meaning they stay zoned business.
Correct, everything around them residential, and same goes for the commercial industrial.
Correct. So, you getting all this stuff off?
I I think. I I think land use and zoning are being used interchangeably here for some people. And.
Yeah.
Tell us more.
I think, yeah. Like, so like, you could live in a residence and its its land use is residential, but it could be zoned. As like in the business district, they're two different things. Yeah, I I I want to think of just the thought here, so like, if if the land's already being used uh for a residence, I just, I I guess I just don't see. It causes nobody any harm or rezonate residence, I'm not saying that's not, if you guys vote for it, that's great. But I just, I just don't see the reason to, if it's already being used that way.
As a residence?
Yeah.
To rezonate a residence?
Right, because the way it's already, it already is a residence.
I I see a reason, which is protection, right? Yeah, because if it's if it's a neighborhood, which is what I'm hearing. Then just as we did in North Swansea, we wanted to protect the neighborhood attributes of it by. Being very mindful of what businesses should be in the middle of that. And and what I'm hearing from all the the surveyed. Members of this neighborhood is that they would like it to be pure residence.
Do, are they under the impression though that all purpose is in that?
No, no, they they know it's a business zone right there.
But all three of those lots for all purpose, not just the one that their business is on, but all lot twenty.
Yeah.
The newly subdivided lot twenty-one. I just, I wanna make sure that they sign this knowing.
Yeah.
That all of the all purpose storage.
Is on business right now, correct, it stays that way.
Okay.
It's gonna be to make a difference.
Okay.
Which is something like that, anything wrong.
If they sign that knowing that, then that, then that's.
Right, yeah, they just wanna protect their property. And their neighborhood and the volume of traffic coming down this road.
If somebody sells their property, then they don't want it to get bought up by a business.
Correct, yeah, and same with the people that are in the commercial industrial zone, which. Want to keep it residential zone. Versus being commercial industrial. They wanna protect their properties. From further commercializing.
Okay, that's different from what I thought you were talking about.
You know, I don't wanna change what's there and what they're doing for business stand now.
Yeah.
But everything, if this one makes sense to me, that they went up this far, put a commercial industrial zone on this road. And then the rest of it was business. Because, you know, half, over half of those lots in the business zone. Are residents or homes and they've never been businesses. Like Arlington baby, like those.
Well, how about then you clarify it for us for another meeting, because you still have time. If the plan where there's no, and you still have time for the petition, if you take one of your blank pages there. And use a green pen or whatever color you wanna use, just to mark all the properties that are gonna, that you propose to be residential. And all the properties you propose to be commercial and industrial. And with those two different colors, and then just stop acting.
There now, and I think they should be able to be wanting off with your businesses there now.
If you do that for us, and shall we keep this? Or you want this back? So if you would do that for us, that'd clarify. What we're looking at.
And can you send that out to the rest of us?
I can, and do we want, do we need two more meetings? So the next meeting, do we want a clarification and then a public hearing, or the next meeting?
Clarification, we need clarification.
We need to just give them an idea of.
Exactly.
Yeah, we probably won't have a public hearing on it, one way or the other, because we have time for zoning public hearings, we'll probably put it into another zoning public hearing later on.
Yeah.
So we have plenty of time for that, we just need them to know which way we're leaning, so that they aren't waiting around for us to do something.
Yep.
So, just the next meeting, you'll get clarification which way the board is gonna go.
And I think if you wanna do a petition this year, the window is November tenth to December tenth. And that's in an RSA, I can't remember where RSA is. Like seven, four, five.
So you've got plenty of time to put a petition in if the board doesn't go along with you.
I I would dig around in the RSAs a bit on petition or zoning petitions.
But they can have the the land.
Yeah, I could try to find, yeah, so.
And you you'll have enough time, you'll be okay, just.
Would it be helpful if? And and the signatures might be there, but if it was. Clear that the property owners in these lots that are are residential. Uh indicate that they are in favor of this.
They can if they want, but we have a public hearing and each one will get a certified letter saying that's only gonna change there, and they can come to the meeting and. And you can get that if you want, that's fine with us, but I'm just saying that you don't have to do that.
An easier step than have us do it, since we're there and they understand.
Just prepare us, prepare us your new map, your drawing of of different colors for what the zones you proposed there, and then we'll look at it next meeting.
Are you saying signatures, Mark, are you saying signatures for our deliberations or for a bigger picture?
Uh just. Literally like an affidavit.
Just so that we know.
They're okay.
That's what the public hearing is all about, though, that's what public hearings are all about, we don't need anything special for them.
Well, we've we already cast, I'm just wondering if that's some information that Mark's asking you to have put on the map or.
No, 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 public hearings are for the public to comment, and that's the way you're going, no special things at all, right?
I did have two, two questions, two questions. Two uh lot owner, work in general, wanting to know if the property. Value change or property assessment change.
Yeah, they can ask about that at a public hearing. Yeah.
It did, but.
What the market will bear on commercial property is, is on the market is, I was a realtor. And when you say commercial versus versus residential, the commercial one's gonna sell by high end. It's gonna be assessed by the town, like you normally would make.
Okay. So there are two different kind of brackets.
Never look at your tax bill when it says market assessment.
Yeah.
That that's the true market assessment, that's what the town sees. But almost every property out there will sell for more than.
So I was the assessing coordinator for the town, so. Um so what happens is the the dirt is assessed at a a uniform value throughout the town.
Okay.
And then the structure is assessed as at a separate rate based on, you know, how big it is and the quality of construction, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And then somebody comes to it, wants to buy it, it's whatever they wanna pay for it.
Right. Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, we'll see you next meeting. All right, brings us to discussions and other business, we have the definition discussion of office. That's first on the line, so I guess we'll do that one, now we have in our zoning that. Office definition there.
Yeah.
Corporate office, I think it is.
Yeah, it would just be, uh if 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 you guys were satisfied.
It's not a bad definition.
It's not, really.
I kinda like, it's pretty good.
It's already in there.
It's already in there, so so what if, you know, we're talking about. Corporate offices, we aren't talking about like the little dentist office or something like that, we're talking about a building that has offices in it. I think is what the intent of the of that use is, and we have it in different places in the zoning, and as Adam pointed out, it's a. It's sort of uh changed around a little bit, so the wording, so we can change that to one specific. Whether it's corporate businesses or corporate offices or something like that, professional offices.
Something.
And use that same definition that we have in our zoning, and I'll read that.
Oh yeah, if you guys wanna look at the last page in the packet, that that's where offices are.
Okay.
Um you guys can see the definition, that's currently listed as corporate office.
Yeah.
The proposal in the packet is to just change it to offices. That's just to get us started, if that's fine, if that's what you guys want, but that's just, I wanna throw something out there. If it doesn't stick, that's that's fine.
Plural office.
Offices, I thi- I think so.
Okay.
I I had a reasoning and I lost it, but I I think I think office is office, kinda. However you guys wanted to find it, it's fine.
As, yeah, it's under corporate office, right?
Yeah.
In our zoning there.
Yes.
And and then it gives a description, so. We could leave it corporate office and only have to change where it is in the zoning itself, we have it in corporate office. In the zoning, what in one of the. Industrial, that's where it is, so we could change it.
I I'm just not happy with.
Corporate means to me a company like Ozren Savini comes in, they got a big office.
Yeah.
And then that may not be overlooked, it would be professional with professional.
Yeah, which is why offices is nice and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that makes you think that, well, you're talking about maybe individual office here and there, you know, that may, it's kind of. Uh vague there.
Yeah.
Whereas it, I think we're talking about a building that has offices in it.
Yeah.
So it's implying scale.
It, so the letter A, okay, do you mean that to be, um building or buildings used permanent for connecting the affairs of a business profession?
That's just how it reads currently, I didn't change it.
So, so it's the difference between a building that has a single. You know, whatever this business is you're talking about, or, you know, a bunch of.
That that definition covers uh anything from a house to a big complex, honestly, I mean, it's building or buildings.
It's a good definition.
So I mean, it it does scale. That definition scales, what we call it might not, so.
Richard.
I just have one. Dramatic thing, I see how it flies, but after industry or government. My thought is period, strike or like activity. And then it may include. Insularity.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I I think there are definitely, there are ways we can change that definition to flow better. How it's worded right now in the code, I I don't love it. But it's there, it hasn't, that's the benefit is that it's there. But I guess if you, if we wanted to change that definition around, it would still probably only be the one or an article.
But I I'm not sure about that, because if if we're asking this one. This new office definition to take the place of business and professional offices in the commercial industrial. Take the place of professional business office and village business one, and take the place of professional business or corporate office. Village business two, isn't that? Rezoning changes.
So we're, we are already changing those zones to incorporate our new definitions for the other two.
Okay.
And so those are already captured in those amendments, so. And you guys said that next week.
Good job, good job.
Do the bold changes. Mirror other definitions. For that word in the code.
It mirrors a certain city close to us. That I won't name. It does name, it it does mirrors uh some similar sized municipalities, but um. Yeah, there are some big, larger, larger cities that have just straight offices and. And their definition like our scales, so.
Whatever the definition. It should be the same definition used. Throughout our code. Or throughout somebody else's code.
Yeah, this is.
It will be, because it's in our, it's in our zoning right there, that that exactly just copied from the zoning, exactly right there.
Yep.
And whether or not we take out, like Richard suggested, we we leave out or like activity. Which is fine, because we're talking about businesses, offices, and and we could easily leave that out of there and to make it flow a little bit better. Yeah, so we all in agreement with that, we just cross out or like activity.
I'm still, I I don't wanna be dangerous. On what you were saying. Is it your picture that this definition of an office? As a use. Means just one company in that, or could it be, you know, multiple floors, different business on each floor?
That's what I'm picking, because of of where it was used in the zoning, that it was larger buildings.
Okay.
And we do need to decide on whether it's gonna be just offices or professional business offices or. Professional or business and professional offices.
We can, we can choose professional offices or business. We can choose one of these already.
Yeah, we can choose, right, and then then we're changing that, all right, how about professional business offices, we have that in. In village business one, I guess.
And that encompasses, that will encompass even a corporate office.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that.
So if we, if we then consolidated or use that definition for just that one. Professional business offices and then changed it in the other zoning. Because it says business and professional offices and commercial industrial and professional business or corporate offices.
Yeah.
So we can just use that one professional business offices then, and they use that same definition maybe with that.
You'll get no complaints from me.
A little bit crossed out. So.
Question.
What uh what constitutes? A professional business? Up to interpretation. It is up to interpretation.
Is considered a professional, no matter what.
Legally professional business.
Strike professional business office.
How the zoning, and I know I, we always take it with a grain of salt, the zoning dictionary likes to classify professional businesses as like lawyers. Uh hacks, consultants, stuff like that, so if we wanted to leave professional out, that's fine too, but I mean, I think it's fine. It's 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 vague enough where we could fit almost anything in there. I would consider you professional.
Well, we could use the one below, you know, that one says professional comma business comma or. We could, I mean, professional business offices, I think kinda covers it.
It does, it does, we, I I want one, I don't care how we get there, I want one. I don't think we need four, I I would accept two, but I I really think we only need one. And wherever you guys decide, I I'm gonna be okay with it, honestly.
But it's a board thing by consensus, professional business offices, Richard.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Michael?
Sounds good.
Steve?
Professional throws up.
So you're a no?
Yes.
Okay, Victoria.
I'm good with that.
Mark?
I think we're good with it.
I think we're gonna go with it.
I'm sorry.
By consensus, we'll just use that, if we run into trouble, then you can blame us. Okay, so that's it, by consensus, professional business offices. And we'll have to change it in business, I mean, business, village two.
Yeah.
Just for park.
So just.
Yeah.
Um so looking at the village business district. Right, they're looking to control. So we allow professional business offices, we consider business. Right here in town. I'm looking for a little similar offices, maybe some additional jobs. Get into the um. The industrial park or commercial industrial area. It could be, you know, huge.
Right.
I can, it could be.
So with that definition of kind of hold true in all those scenarios.
It does, because of block sizes, I mean, you know, you.
And that's what I'm hoping, is there's like, there's there's limitations, right, thirty-five versus forty-five.
And there are setbacks and all that, and parking, all that type of stuff, so that limits them in those different zones.
Okay.
Yeah, I I like to think village business one and two would be able to contain it to a smaller.
Yeah, small, a couple offices or something like that, maybe one office.
And I guess, you know, and I guess if we find out in the future that it doesn't, then we'll look at it again, right, I mean, I I don't think it will have that problem.
We we probably won't.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna go, I have to have it.
Are you folks back for us? Okay.
Later on, if there's a. Update you want.
Okay.
No, I haven't, but, well, I kinda, you heard what I said. You heard what I said earlier.
That brings us, yeah, service. Uh retail establishment. That's the next one on the line, number B, I mean, letter B, definition discussion, retail establishment. And we have one of those in here too, right down?
Yes, uh it's in the same MO on the other side. Just condensing retail business establishment and retail sales, comma, services. Yeah, and so I I like this because you have service establishment and you have retail establishment, I think they work really well together. There's kind of opposite sides for the same coin. Um and that would be classified as a business or commercial enterprise that provides immediately accessible goods to the consumer. That is a starting definition. I expect this to be looked at.
So immediately, you mean, it's on the shelf, you can walk out with it.
That was my thought.
Opposed to, what would what would not be immediate?
That's why we're just, I I don't know.
I I have some wording for that.
I I I'm Frankensteining a couple definitions from the dictionary slash municipalities, nothing really fit with what we wanted to accomplish.
Retail establishment would, uh, my opinion would be sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer. As distinguished from sales at wholesale in large quantity meant for resale.
Yeah.
Retail is for retail, wholesale is for wholesale, and that distinguishes the two. I'll read it over again, sales, go ahead.
Are we allowed to deliberate this while uh that application is still on the table?
What application is that?
The. The base road application.
And we're deliberating what, you mean, you're talking about the zoning change?
Oh, cuz they have.
No, no, the retail sales.
They have the sales comma services.
This has nothing to do with them, this has to do with zoning.
I I think we can, because they, if they applied under that, they, that's what they fall under, they wouldn't fall under this new definition, because that's not what they applied under.
Right, it was under service or something like.
Yeah.
Service.
I think so, we'll we'll check with.
Good point to bring up. So again, retail establishment, sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer. As distinguished from sales at wholesale in large quantity meant for resale.
We really have to do the small versus large.
We don't have to, we can leave the wholesale thing out of it.
Because, you know, retail. Is one thing, wholesale's another.
Yeah.
This this comes in little boxes, this is many things in big boxes.
Well, one is meant for resale and the other one is meant to direct. And we're trying to. Yeah, we might need, not need that in there at all.
I can go to a wholesale operator. And buy half a truckload of a particular product. Widget. I can take and turn around and sell by the case. What I just bought wholesale. Is that reset, uh retailer?
If you're selling directly to the consumer, it's retail.
The whole, the wholesale is selling, selling directly to me.
Yeah.
I am one of many. Anybody buying.
But but what you're doing with the product is you're selling it to Victoria, or you're selling it to another company who's gonna resell it again.
Okay.
She's saying she's gonna sell this.
Selling to her, to Victoria, to Mark, to everyone.
If you're selling to another wholesaler, then you're you're.
It's not a wholesaler. They're a retail.
Okay, then. Then you're the wholesaler and they're the retailer, correct?
Okay.
They're gonna sell to the the final customer, you're gonna sell to her who has the store.
Ideally, there's always gonna be some.
So how about, how about web, okay, that's a retail establishment, is it not? And it has, it has a, you know, walk in where I can immediately access, get some immediately accessible goods. Or it can sell retail to the plumber who's gonna, you know, effectively they're wholesaling it because. There, I hope they're buying it at slightly lower cost and then.
I think their primary is wholesale, and I think their accessory would be retail, because everyone's always allowed like an accessory use, right, because if you go into a hairdresser. Their primary is gonna be a service establishment, but they might have an accessory use of a retail establishment, but.
That's what we just defined.
They're always allowing to have that.
So you would not say that web is a retail.
I think there would be wholesale.
When you have a plumber come to your house, the plumber goes down.
There are two separate businesses in there though, too, so I don't.
Anyway, let's let's say that the the, there is a side to web where you can go in and you can buy stuff.
If it's a separate storefront, then they are definitely a retail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Has wonderful definitions.
No, it doesn't. Well, put it to a penny, it's a one. To the way that is confused.
I'm a planner, Steve.
Didn't have a definition before. I think some type of dictionary. Doesn't have to be blacks, it can be anyways.
You've got the manufacturer code, you can go back to have all those different things in it if you want to go back.
So let's get back to the definition of sales. Sales and would it be retail salad, would it be sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer?
I like direct to the consumer, I'm not sure about the quantities.
Small quantities, okay. Sales.
Retail place and that's large.
Okay.
Larger, yeah, larger quantities.
So, sales direct to the consumer.
That's that's small quantities. That's that's not large quantities. Large one, they just buy by the pallet. Just clarify real quick, we're, we already have these uses in our code, so, I mean, we're just trying to define something that's that we already have in Swansea. We're just condensing the two already existing uses into one, but by doing that, we do have to unfortunately define it, I think, so. And we could leave it undefined if you guys want to leave it undefined.
I want to separate sales and services, I really.
I really do, I really do.
I think maybe we should keep the small quantities in there, because then if you're selling in large quantities, you could be a wholesaler. So it does, because of like. Like quantities, yeah, he brought up the fact of a hairdresser, right, smelling, and selling small quantities of. The hair product as opposed to large, he was talking about pallets, so. If they're selling pallets of it and it was just under selling to the consumer, they'd say, well, I'm just selling to consumer, you know, I bought five pallets of whatever. Rather than establishing a retail establishment is something smaller on a smaller scale than selling.
Let's keep, let's keep.
I want to buy a case eighty six. Is that a retail or wholesale, the indication?
We don't need to go down that far, if if you're the consumer and you're gonna use that. Case of whatever the heck it is, then it was a retail sales because you're the consumer, you aren't reselling it to someone or something, whatever, so.
I think if uh it means. If you're distributing in large quantities, odds are you're a wholesaler because you're distributing. So you're gonna go for wholesale regardless, because you have volume.
A wholesaler does not sell to the general public, so does not send, sell to the end user. No, a wholesaler does, for those, for all this purpose, because we're gonna go into warehousing, you know, we have warehousing and and that type of stuff here. So, yeah, someone once in a while might come in and say, you know, sell me a bit of that.
All the time.
But again, they they sell, not not to, not, you're the end user, right, what'd you buy off of? You know, whatever you bought, you're the end user, right? The plumber, he said that that was wholesale, but you're talking about two different things, wholesale, talking about price wise, we aren't, you know, but it isn't. For for our zoning, it isn't, because you're talking about wholesale, but web sold to that plumber, he was the end user, he used it and put it in that house. So that was a, that was not a wholesale, that was a retail, maybe for wholesale prices, but a retail sales.
A wholesale establishment looks way different than a retail establishment, it's just so much bigger. I I don't think we're gonna run into any issues.
Alright, I I lost track of where we are.
So we're, we're asking, we're designing whether retail establishment is gonna say sales in small quantities and or uh. Or how much, yeah, sales in small quantities, direct to the consumer.
And and are we taking out the business or commercial enterprise that provides immediately accessible goods? Are we replacing that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, that was meant to be. I like to give you guys a start.
Something to start with, that is good, we need that.
With small quantities being small amounts of the same item, even though they might be buying many items.
Uh, we probably don't need to go that far in defining it, we're.
We're just trying to make sure we don't get trapped, that's why I'm just, you know.
Well, if if there's, you know, when they come into the planning board, they say, well, we're selling with small quantities, but it's, we consider a shipload or a boxcar load, small quantity. The planning board say, well, that's not a small quantity, you know, that's, this is what the definition says, and that's when you maybe get into that. You know. The planning board can say whether they're a wholesale or.
You know, small quantities, I'm not, I'm not sure there's.
I think you have to, because if you don't have small quantities in there, you could have the guy with the box truck in, you know, in his store selling. Huge quantities as wholesale, but selling well, saying, well, you know, you don't say anything about quantities, and we're just selling to the direct consumer, and this is it.
So Market Basket is a retail establishment, it's selling huge volumes of stuff. So it's not small quantities.
Well, but you buy it in small quantities, you go into the store and buy.
Small quantities of individual items.
Yeah, and and you're selling to the end user.
Because you might buy a hundred items, but they're, you know.
But they're all different items.
They're different items.
So you're buying small quantities.
Yeah.
But like the co-op. Has occasional case lot purchasing by the consumer.
Yep.
It's more, it's more than what would be interpreted.
But there indeed.
But say, well, Gamarlos has their packs of, you know. I'm just saying.
It'll give the planning board more, or the planning department or code enforcement, whoever, more control if we leave that in there, because then you wouldn't have a wholesaler coming in. In a place where we don't think a wholesaler should be.
Can can you read it, or can I send over and I'll read this?
I'll send, I crossed it out, but I, we put it back in again.
Which one am I reading?
Uh, that penciled one in the bottom there.
Retail establishment.
Yes.
Sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer as distinguished from sales.
Well, we probably aren't putting that in there.
I think it's, I think it can't hurt and it might.
Yeah, small parties. And or direct to the consumer. Yeah, I think.
There's always gonna be.
Sales in small quantities direct to.
Yeah, leave the and or out there.
Alright, we're done.
Is that the consensus of the board here then, is that the consensus? For now?
Yeah, for now.
We're gonna go over this again.
Where did you go?
Michael. Steve.
I'm hung up on the word small.
Duly noted, you put it in the minutes there.
I like the word small.
Mark, Mark, leaving it, uh, with the small quantities in there?
Uh, if there was a better word, I'd go with it.
Well, keep thinking about it, because we're gonna be looking at this again.
So I will have this drafted in.
I'm with Rich.
I'll have this drafted in an amendment next meeting, so you guys could look at it and how we voted on it, if you guys don't like it, then let me know.
And we can change wording then.
You guys have a while to change it, so we're, we're, we're good, we gotta have the final wording.
Okay, the final word, yes, after all of that is sales, the retail establishment, definition of that, sales in small quantities. Direct to the consumer. Right? Okay. So, do you want that? Okay, so, oh, brings us to site plan reviewer train.
You want to do this?
Yeah. Postponing that to the the next meeting.
I think it's gonna stay off of it.
Okay, but we'll put it on the next agenda anyway. Okay, so does anyone have anything else for the meeting?
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick update, um, probably on the education information. So we haven't forgotten that y'all asked us a year ago to uh look at the hundred twenty five foot wetland setback. And we hired Bruce Wood Ethological and um. They just came in a couple days ago to our meeting and uh gave us their summary. With uh some maps and some interesting information of the weapons evaluation they did this season. They're also um gonna give us the, their final version of the ordinance audit that they did for us starting last winter. So we have those two things that we want to share with you really soon, and the Contra Promise is having a a separate meeting. Uh, in the next couple of weeks to sort of make a game plan for how we're going to um, how and what we're gonna present, and and so. We hope to come see you in November at one of your meetings, and then you can tell us which one would be better. To talk about these things and and to brainstorm with you guys about how to move forward.
Do you want to be an agenda item, or do you want to have a joint meeting?
That's a good question.
It it doesn't matter, I guess, because we discuss the same things, you know, we'll set time up, whether it's a gen item or not, and uh whoever can make it from your board.
Yeah, I I I can remember the last time we had. I I think it would be very productive to be a joint meeting.
Yeah, I think that, I think that could be great.
Then we'll have to see, I guess Adam can coordinate.
Tell me well in advance.
Yes.
To our next conservation commission meetings, I don't think we have a ton on the agenda probably.
I think joint meetings are held by the planning board, I think when it's, it's underneath that. I think so, we usually have.
Depending on your municipality, like, planning and licenses holds our planning board joint meeting. Would this be on a planning board date?
It could be on a planning board day. Going on our, yeah, I don't know what's.
Yeah.
Or you can do it.
We can start public hearings in November, or we can start in December.
We can do it in lieu of our next meeting.
We have, we have time. We have to do applications first. We're on time now for public, for town meetings, so. And so I want to stay on time, but we, I, we started this early enough that we're still.
What she has to present might be part of town meeting stuff, so maybe the sooner the better.
Yep.
So you said that the next planning board meeting in October was gonna be a busy one.
Hmm, I actually think we're gonna be okay, we have two applications, a subdivision and a value line adjustment. Kind of, they're pretty light, I mean.
I'm not sure we'll be ready by then, because we did want to have a, we were trying to schedule another time coming this month so we can get our act together.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, if if you want, look at the agenda for November, uh, the dates for the planning board meetings changed, uh, there are two back to back meetings. On the fourteenth and then whatever the date is after the twenty first.
One of those probably weren't good, actually, because it probably won't be so swamped in one of those.
Exactly, so, uh, look at the schedule for November.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there is time, there is time.
Okay.
Did you say someone in the bed was?
I was just gonna ask, if it's a joint planning board meeting, that'd be on the same that is regular planning board?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay, and then otherwise, alternatively, if it's on a different date, do you want films? That's not like a dynamic word.
Doesn't need to be, I mean, even the planning board meetings, in my opinion, don't need to be filmed, you know, so if you can't make it, it's no problem.
Okay, um, I'm just only gonna need that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know like way in advance.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much, so, so let's have that that November then.
Yeah.
We'll figure out a new shady.
Absolutely, yeah, sure.
So let's see, the uh subcommittee for the fire safety.
I'm sorry, Stefan had something in mind. That was the. Request for the funds.
Crosswalks?
Yeah. Oh.
So, the selectmen, I don't know if they proved that or whatever, but they want. They they did, they they want to put crosswalks, these are flashing like crosswalks. And not really crosswalks either, right?
No.
I don't think they plan to plant them, but anyways, it's on Saurus Crossing Road where the rail trail crosses the road a couple of different times there.
I would.
And it may set up like a push button where it start flashing lights on the road, so drivers can see that some, something's gonna happen there.
So nice.
So I think they're looking for our recommendation, is that what it is? Yeah.
So there's three of them, right?
Yeah.
Four, three, three.
Three, and then at last night, they talked about putting one up right here, where where Eaton Road goes through the rail trail, because. Residents on Railroad Street were complaining about cars going too fast, which isn't gonna really stop that too much, but anyways, they talked about that too. May or may not be in that, but that was just last night, luck of this meeting.
That'd be so good.
Today. If the board, go ahead.
Those, but we were talking about this earlier. My preference priority is Route Ten crossing from Perry Lane to Culver School versus the rail trailer. I would like to see that happen before the rail trail.
I would object a little bit, because not only that, that being a state road. They have to give permission from the state, and that's gonna take you a year at least.
Thirty two is a state road. And they put it up pretty quickly between the two schools.
Well, school next year. School, state, they say they had that in that plan, remember to do that anyway. You'd have to go back, so, I I agree with you, but you shouldn't be there, don't get me wrong. But what I'm talking about is the state has control over that. And I think it'd be an agenda issue, but it might take quite some time to get it done.
Well, Route Ten is a different class highway, is it a class two highway?
A class three.
Pretty highway, but it's different than Route Thirty Two. But this is, this is for a grant, I think that they're getting for that.
But the one, because I think Thirty Two was done on purpose, because if you remember when I came to the board, that's what they said, they put in that in the um. The roundabout, they would not have do that.
Oh, that, yeah, I know, I'm.
That was how it ended, state's plan.
Yeah, yeah.
This is something.
That's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah. It's a good point. Good point.
I don't know what we could do with this.
If it's a block grant, I don't see why you can't. It's not a problem.
You still gotta get permission from state, even if it starts again, you want to do it, you gotta get permission from the state to do anything.
We'd have to get permission from the state before we got the grant, because they would never issue us a grant without permission from the state to do that.
Also, it's actually two applications.
What are they?
The second one is sidewalks by Swansea Center, like a continuation of the going towards uh.
And they're looking for the planning board input, input on both of those? Is that what, or you're talking about two grants, or what are we talking about?
It's, so it's a grant, two separate applications. And we're not prioritizing either of them, we're just submitting them.
So, you're looking for, or selectmen are looking for a recommendation from the planning board for both of those things, no?
No, the town is looking for support for, from the planning board.
And that'd be a recommendation that the planning board supports that, yeah. Okay, so if the planning board supports that, then we need a motion stating so.
And the sidewalk is just to fill the gap between existing sidewalks now, so.
No, I think it's just an extension, because there's no. I think it's. Far down Thirty Two.
Yeah.
After the Grange, it's gone.
Yeah.
Not yet, Mark.
Guess I wasn't following the conversation.
So we have a motion by Michael. As a recommendation to the selectmen that the planning board is in favor of those crosswalks. And not really crosswalks, but the the lights will say on Saurus Crossing Road and the extension of the sidewalk on.
It's a long Route Thirty Two.
Long Thirty Two. We have a second for that?
Second, but, second, but are you sorry, isn't on Matthews, on Matthews Road flashing lights with it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, Matthews Road, yeah. I said Saurus Crossing Road, didn't I?
As a daily driver of that rail trail, please.
Yes.
If the visibility on that, on that.
Okay, so we have motion and a second motion was by Michael, second was by Victoria in favor of that, is there any further discussion?
I'll just say those lights, each one of those units, I believe it's about twelve thousand dollars.
Is it?
Just so people feel excited.
That's a great, correct?
Correct. The. Mass.
Mass.
I see why he's not training us tonight, he can't keep a train of thought there, too distracted. Okay, all those in favor, we kept by saying aye, aye, all opposed, okay, you have a recommendation from us, uh is it okay in the minutes or do you need a memo?
I have one drafted.
Okay, then I'll decide that if you have one drafted, okay. Anything else, other than we have, uh well, the the fire station subcommittee. Uh where we are right now is that we've uh, we're gonna contract with the architect. To draw up a set of smaller plans um for that site up there, going with the site on Route thirty-two. And. She's authorized, I think there's a cap of thirty thousand dollars to come up with a set of plans and um from maybe DEW. To decide what it might cost us for developing that site, so that's just starting out, last night they just approved that, so. By November eighth, we should have a set of plans for that, a new fire station, actually, yeah. Replacement of number two station is what it is.
Right.
And the the station is configured differently now, it's swung around so that the engines come directly straight onto thirty-two. There is administrative part of it to the left of the building, and then there are two stories there with unfinished upstairs. For future development of the fire department, and the selectmen also are going to pursue. With, I think, the developer right next door to extend the water line up to that lot. Because the sewer is already there and they they need the water there for the fire station, so.
The fire station, you can go with some other.
Could go there, it could, yeah, yeah, because, yeah, it's all gonna be voted by the voters, but we're just seeing what it's gonna cost. We've told the architect that we want a cap of three point five million to see what our design can come up with. And so that's what we're doing, that's where we are now.
Still a question, will the unfinished upstairs be insulated?
Most likely, yes, it should be, right, it'll be insulated, we talked about that, I think, with the architect, and it it makes sense to insulate it, don't leave it uninsulated.
The shell.
Yeah, just yeah, the shell, and use it for future development of that station, if and when they need it. And let's see, we had our first preliminary meeting of the tax increment finance district this morning, so that group is set up. And what that group is looking at, I'm one of them, there are a few other members there. Is a tax increment zone, I think I talked about it before when we discussed it, when you guys stuck me with the job, along Route ten there. And probably from maybe where Forest Avenue is somewhere is in there, down to probably where. So our North Winchester Street comes out, down like by Riverbend, that area there. Uh we don't know, I know, yeah, this is preliminary, but that would be the distance there. Yeah, we don't really know, that's what the group is gonna determine whether it's feasible or whether the town should do that and how big the area should be, what it'll entail. So what we're gonna be discussing is the West Swansea Water Company. And how that, cuz that's one of their primary driving forces behind this is to get some kind of funds to acquire that West Swansea Water Company. And to extend it and put in a water tower, uh more storage anyway. So that's where we're at with that, so we're gonna be discussing mainly that water company. What it might entail and where it might go, and then when we look at that, we'll probably decide what the area should be for the zone.
Does the area have sewers now or will they have?
Sewer, you said, um some of it probably will, some of it won't, but again, we haven't really drawn the district yet, but if it gets into that. Definitely, if some will have sewer because it'll probably entail the existing water lines that are there now. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay, we had our first meeting on this committee also, uh we got looking at some big. Picket lines coming up for water, for what was fire truck. At seven hundred and fifty thousand. Basically, all we did is the first meeting, we went over what was left over from last year, tried to organize a little bit, get our chair and our vice chair in in office. Um and we did have the Grange group come in, but we're gonna have them come in at the end uh to. Uh give us a pause or a day one, what we do is we we actually meet with all of the department heads. Okay, and they come in with their needs and wants, and we see how it fits into it, sometimes we have to uh schedule these big items out. In years, uh the biggest one is gonna be, of course, is gonna be DBW, they're the biggest ones every year. But this Victor is there, I think he, from what I understand, he got a brand of grade for a really nice price.
So that won't be in the CIP, right, cuz they already bought it?
Uh it, I don't, I'm basically saying they already bought.
Okay, so that won't be in the CIP, that's alright.
Won't be on, I said I didn't buy it, it's already bought, it was authorized the last year, I don't know. But I don't think it's on the beach, it's gonna try to schedule, move anything up.
Yeah.
Turn it down, trucks or or anything like that.
Alright.
Recreation, did you look at that one?
Oh, the recreation one, well, we haven't really looked at.
You haven't gotten any of them yet, really?
We haven't really gotten any of them really yet, we just underscored on some of the things I remember from last year that are coming up, I could have brought my schedule, you think, right here?
No need, I know you'll give us.
Well, it it'll come down and I'll report every every time, meaning what we've done up to that point.
Yep.
For what's going on, but nothing is really finalized till the last meeting and then we vote what we recommend for the selection. And what we do is we recommend, it's like we do the grunt work, figuring out where the money's gonna go.
Yeah.
Then the selectmen, the final, totally says whether they put the bomb on or not.
Okay, good.
So we screwed some of the exterior.
Yeah, well, that's what you guys are supposed to be doing, taking a fear out of it, anybody else? If not.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn by Richard, second by.
Second.
Second by Steve, is there any further discussion, all in favor?